Before I call the meeting to order, ask everybody. All phones. And those joining us. The common council of the city of Glendale is now in session. All rise for the pledge of allegiance. And, uh, sorry, Chief Fugman is going to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Vukovich. Alderman Doherty.
Here.
Alderman Galhard.
Here.
Alderman Bailey.
Here.
Alderman Schmelzling.
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw. You have a quorum.
Very much. Uh, first item on the agenda tonight, uh, is the swearing in of our new police chief. Uh, we also had a resolution we passed at our last meeting for the outgoing chief. Um, and so we now have that framed copy of the resolution, correct? Okay. Um, so we'd like to actually present first, uh, former chief, retired chief, Mark Ferguson with his, uh, with his proclamation from the city last time. So if I could have the members of the council join me out here and Chief Ferguson will grab a picture real quick. Um, I want to say before we, uh, just want to say a huge thank you to the police commission. We have a fantastic commission and, um, they, uh, they met and a few weeks back, I think it was middle of May. Uh, and they were unanimous in their decision to promote Captain Fugman to be Chief Fugman. And so as of June 1st, Rhett has been serving as the police chief for the city of Glendale. And, uh, um, he has been with the department for 24 years. And, uh, it's interesting, in the last 30 years, he, we've had only two chiefs of police. He becomes the third chief since 1994. So pretty impressive, uh, the way this department is operated. Every single chief from the city of Glendale has always been promoted from within. We've never gone outside to do a search. So since the founding of the city in 1950, all of our police chiefs have come from within the department. And that's a really a testament to the amazing department we have and the way in which they have, um, given opportunities for the officers and then the sergeants and lieutenants and the captains to grow and to be able to, to be developed as leaders and be able to be promoted from within in the department. So, um, I wanted to say congratulations, uh, chief on, on your promotion and we're excited for the, hopefully 15 or 20 years you'll continue to work with. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, you wanna? Do you want to step out front here so we can get pictures? What? Yeah. So I'm going to put you on the spot, your first meeting. Any words of wisdom you'd like to give us? You've also got some of the department here, so.
I'm very fortunate to be part of this department.
They're leaving before you speak.
They know they only have a few more, a few minutes that last in a meeting before they want to walk out. No, I mean, I, I'm very fortunate to be part of this department for the last 24 plus years. Um, we've had great leadership, uh, along with, uh, great people to work with. Uh, the men and women of this department are fantastic. The men and women of the city are fantastic to work with. I've loved every minute of working for this, uh, city and for the citizens of this city. And, uh, look forward to continuing that and continuing to grow our department. As you said, Mayor, the, uh, what we've created, our, our culture is, is excellent. And I look forward to, uh, doing what my predecessors have done. And again, I thank Mark again for everything you've done for us and done for me over the, the last, uh, five, last 24 years, but particularly the last five years, uh, under your wing. And again, it's, it's about the people and I think, uh, we have great people all around and that's, that's, uh, that's what makes the difference.
Hey, now we got a meeting to do. Thank you all for coming out. Appreciate it. All right, now we're up to public comment. Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the mayor and council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to speak to a non-agenda item? Yes, Pam, go ahead. Um, make sure you pull the mic, when you sit down, make sure you pull the microphone right in front of you. Speak directly into it and start with your name and address, even though we all know you.
Kathleen Carey, 5711 North Crestwood Boulevard. Just curious if, uh, DPW could put on their scheduled trimming of the bushes on Crestwood? Because they're hanging over in, and I know no one's going to believe this, but Crestwood residents don't think the stop signs in Crestwood pertain to them. So, uh, we. We have a four-way.
Wrong.
We have a four-way stop right at my corner and I really have to commit to a turn without knowing if there's anybody else coming or not. I can't see because of the brush that's there. So that's my only request.
Okay. Eric, did you get that? Okay, thank you. Any other public comment items? All right. What? Oh, someone raised their hand online. Uh, Andrew Whelan, go ahead. We already said your name, but if you could please start with your address and then what is your comments, sir?
Sure. Again, my name's Andrew Whelan. My address is 5700 North Bel Air Drive. Also in the Crestwood, um, subdivision, I'd like to echo my neighbor's comments on trimming the bushes along the roadway because it is a danger, it is a hazard. Um, and I also wanted to jump on tonight and get more information on, uh, how to have some of the trees along the roadway on our property, uh, trimmed or taken down. Not only are they, um, old and branches are falling and, um, a danger, but also, uh, they're kind of a nuisance. There's these real, real long, uh, like seeds that fall every year that are impossible to keep up with and maintain to clean up. And, uh, we were hoping to find out more about, since they're, um, on the city side of the sidewalk, if they could be removed.
Warwick or Mr.? Ask people's memory, but the, how the process works for evaluating the trees and, and how that maintenance is done? And this is Director of Public Works who's approaching the microphone. So I think he can respond at least to the, the process for how trees are evaluated and what that process is. Yeah, Charlie?
Um, we do have a city, uh, ISA certified arborist on staff. So we can go, I mean, basically the best way to do this is get in touch with DPW because we're not, we have over 4,000 trees in the city, so it's a little hard to make sure we're addressing all them. But that's the best way to do it is, is call DPW 228-1710. And then we can go out, assess it and, uh, check from there. But these are only street, uh, street owned trees that we will assess.
Right, not on people's yards.
Correct, that is the owner's responsibility, property owner's responsibility to maintain them.
Okay. So Andrew, he just gave you the phone number, but I think he also, which, which part of Crest, is it Crestwood Boulevard? Where did you say you were?
Uh, I'm on the corner of Bel Air and Raleigh.
Okay. So maybe Bel Air and have Bel Air, Raleigh and some of the streets of, if you could have the arborist go take a look at those.
I'll reach out to DPW tomorrow. I really appreciate the, the added information.
Sure, yeah, not a problem.
Thanks. All right, thank you.
Any other comments in public comment? All right, we will move on then with our agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. The money allocated for candy for the Fourth of July parade, as well as approval of accounts payable. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
Moved.
Moved by Alderman Doherty, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Galhard. Um, any discussion? Yes, Alderwoman Shaw?
I'm just curious, where are the minutes, since it's down normally on the consent agenda, the minutes from the last, uh, meeting they held, along with the department reports that normally are under the content consent agenda?
I can take both of those. The, um, monthly reports are typically on the second meeting of the month. Um, they were, um, we had a, we didn't have a help meeting, uh, for the second one in, in May, which will be sent out to you guys shortly. Um, and the minutes, um, due to some external circumstances, we were unable to complete them and they will be on the next agenda for completion.
Any other discussion? Opted without objection here. On to old business. If the item before us now is the resolution requesting a review from the US Postal Service for reassignment of zip codes in the city of Glendale. Um, you will notice that there are some changes in the language. Alderman Galhard had some, uh, I think some really good ideas and suggestions. Alderman Doherty and I also sat down and had a few other things that we added. But there are some changes to the resolution, as well as some changes to the letter to US Postmaster DeJoy. Um, over the weekend, I had an opportunity also to chat with, um, representative from, uh, Senator Baldwin's office, as well as with Congresswoman Moore herself and one of her representatives. So they are, they know that we're going to be sending along, um, this to their offices. That will also go to Senator Ron Johnson's office. I have not had a chance to talk with him yet, but I do have the contact there. Um, so I guess I'll open it up first for any discussion before we have a motion to approve the resolution. Yes, Alderwoman Shaw?
I just want to say I like the idea of what zip code you picked.
It was not my idea, but I, I, I thought it was a great suggestion and so 53250 is not assigned and we were founded in 1950, so.
Great suggest.
Yeah. Yeah, Alderman Schmelzling.
Um, I just think the, what's being put forward now, I think it kind of covers all of our bases. So I think I was at first really wondering if we could get everything together in Glendale itself. But I think having it the way it's set up like this makes sense. Um, and, uh, I, I think this would probably be where things would have fallen regardless. So I guess I'm just saying, I think, uh, it's a all good modifications and the letter sounded like it covered everything as well, so.
I, I think the most important thing here is that the city hall mail, if this is approved, all of the mail to city hall, regardless where it's mailed from, all of it is going to go through one post office that is not located in the city of Milwaukee. So all the 53217 and 53250 mail, everything would go through the Lydell post office if this is approved by the US Postmaster, so. Yeah, I think that's the most important thing is making sure that we're not having to deal with our absentee ballots being collected at Tetonia and sent downtown on election day instead of being delivered here, so. I'm Alderman Galhard.
I, you know, looking over the, the, the new proposal, I think it's absolutely, uh, the, our best chance of getting this done. Um, and I, I think that it's, it's a winner for the city all the way around. So I totally support it.
And you did catch a typo earlier and I made that change already on, on my computer. So when I print out the final to pro, it, it is in there. So thank you for catching that. Yeah, Alderman Doherty?
It ends up being such a win-win. There's no downside to this proposals. I, I applaud. And I think it's a great thing for the city.
Now we just have to hope that people in Washington will actually listen to.
Have to start somewhere.
That's right. Yeah, Alderwoman? You're not, Mike's on.
Okay, people in my district who have three zip codes, uh, will be happy. Um, just going 5321709 and 12. It's a little much for one. Little small. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay, can we get a motion then to adopt the resolution and also that includes, uh, with the adopting of the resolution, approving the letter that I've written? So can we get a motion to that effect, please? Moved by Alderman Vukovich is our second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmelzling. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no? Motion carries and that will go in the mail tomorrow. Actually emailed tomorrow, but. All right, we'll move on now. We have a long list of new business items. Uh, the first new business item is a proclamation recognizing Juneteenth Day. Alderman, or I'm sorry. I was gonna say Alderman Vukovich, but I usually go to the city administrator first and then. Did you?
Turn it over to Alderman Vukovich if she wanted to lead this one.
Alderman Vukovich?
Hey. Happy to be. Um, no, I'm just kidding. Um, the Juneteenth is a very important holiday for most African Americans and across the country. That's when we decided that we are a country that recognizes freedom and recognize individuals as not property, but, uh, free to do whatever, kind of whatever they need to do. Sometimes we digress, but now we're, you know, this is one of those things where, um, I wouldn't be sitting here if this wasn't, if Juneteenth never happened. I mean, it's just literally some places and some people. And we do have some, uh, recognizable people that will be at the Juneteenth parade, which I will, um, kind of sit that in. It's one of the largest in the country.
Still the largest Juneteenth.
It is still the largest Juneteenth. It started in 1971 and it has been going on ever since. We will be running, walking in, uh, city of Glendale does have a spot. We just don't know where it is yet and we will give you that information, um, either on social media and watch Brian, uh, the mayor's, uh, Facebook and my Facebook to say where we're going to be lining up. But thank you for supporting.
All right, um, can we get a motion to?
So move.
Moved by Alderman Vukovich is our second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bailey. Um, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the proclamation recognizing Juneteenth, say aye.
Aye.
I pose no?
Mayor, I do have one other question. Please wear good footwear. This is a long.
It is a long parade.
It is a long parade. It goes, depending on where you are, you could be all the way on 20th and Atkinson and it goes all the way to Third and, I mean, Martin Luther King driving burlap. And then it might even go further. So I don't know where they're stopping it, but it's a long one. Um, so be prepared.
Um, also, our former state senator Lena Taylor, who's now Judge Taylor in Milwaukee Circuit Court, is, uh, doing her investiture at Juneteenth, first ever, the time, first time ever that a judge has, is coincided their investiture with Juneteenth. So, um, I've been in touch with the judge and, uh, I'm looking forward to being there at her investiture. She's invited me to, to be a part of it, so.
Actually invited.
Yeah, she did. She did extend the invitation to all of us, so. Um, and all of us are welcome to, uh, to march that day. So what lineup will be sometime, I think around eight or eight thirty, nine o'clock in the morning. All right, we'll move on now to item 6B, a proclamation recognizing June as pride month in the city of Glendale. And is that your resolution? Alderman Bailey?
Um, just, I guess as we get ready to celebrate the 51st year since the Stonewall riots in New York, this, uh, proclamation does honor those LGBTQ plus individuals who have come before us and, um, also recognizes that, um, across the country, we still see, um, LGBTQ plus individuals have their rights, uh, threatened. Um, we live in an affirming city and I, um, appreciate that we can. Proclamation. Um, and that we get to put the flag up for, uh, all of our people to see. So, uh, yes, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Would you like to, uh, make a motion then to approve the proclamation?
I will.
Thank you, is her second. Seconded by Alderman Vukovich. Any further discussion? I'll just add, yesterday was the pride parade. Um, I joined Alderman Bailey. Um, we were with a group, um, that was, had a, a unit in the parade and I saw so many Glendale people that were participating. It was really exciting to see, um, gay straights, uh, but, or allies. There were so many folks there that I knew, you know, were not gay, but had shown up to be allies and support. And it was a really busy, huge parade with a really packed parade route. It was really exciting, a lot of fun, so, yeah. All right, um, all those in favor of approving the proclamation recognizing June as pride month, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Motion carries. Proclamation is approved. Uh, the next item is review and action on establishing these annual salary for the police chief. I'll turn it over to Mr. Warwick.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Kennedy. Uh, so while the police commission makes the appointment of the chief of police, the common council determines the chief's salary. So here at the meeting, we are asking for consideration of the chief of police, um, Rhett Fugman's salary effective June 1st, excuse me, June 1st, when he took over as chief of police.
The recommendation here is. By Alderman Shaw? Alderman Vukovich. Other discussion?
Go ahead, Joanne Edred.
Alderman Shaw?
I'm just curious how the dollar amount was determined.
Uh, so fortunately, we had a good salary survey that we just completed for all employees. So we were able to reference that salary survey to, um, bring, bring Mr. Fugman within the average of the municipalities around us that are in question, um, to determine his salary.
I'm just curious. I don't know what the range was and I just want, you know, it, because I know I fought for, um, Chief Ferguson on his salary. And I was just curious, does this fall in the center, higher or lower?
That's a good question. Maybe Jessica has the salary range in front of her, which looks like she does.
You've normally singled out one person on a salary, but yours has to be established because you just took off. Usually there's, all the salaries are approved as one motion at the end of the year, so.
So it is like, um, Administrator Warwick said, it was the average of the comparable communities that we had from the compensation study. It is above the midpoint. The midpoint is a little over 119. So.
Just out of curiosity, what's the high point?
137, 526.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
What was the top of the range under Chief Ferguson?
Same range, correct?
That was the same range.
That's the same range.
His salary was 127.
127. And the captain position that Fugman just vacated was, he was at 119. So he was already at the midpoint in his captain position of what the midpoint was for the chief of police.
And in terms of comparable, uh, municipalities nearby, what, what did we can consider in that, uh?
Average?
Well, no, what, what communities were considered?
Oh, I don't have the complete list, but we had 19.
And try to average amongst 19, which we identified as comparable communities for all of our salaries.
Yeah.
Would have been nice to have that in the, the packet to consider, uh, instead of nothing.
Um, Brookfield, Brown Deer, Burlington, Caledonia, Cedarburg, Germantown, Grafton, Greendale, Hartland, Mequon, Pewaki, Shorewood, St. Francis, Sussex, Boatosa and Whitefish Bay.
Okay, so what is, what has the chief of Whitefish Bay earned?
Current is 129, 403.
Okay.
Which is higher than the vacating chief Ferguson, so.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries. Thank. All right, the next item is authorization to execute the 2024 Glendale sanitary sewer cleaning and televising project with a qualus not to exceed 198, 750. Now I'll turn it over to Mr. Warwick.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Kennedy. Um, so staff went out to bid for the sanitary sewer and televising project. As a result, uh, this is an annual project that we bought to bid for. Uh, the low bidder on it is, um, Equilis of a price of 198, 750. So we're looking for authorization to execute the contract. Um, and Mr. Imig is up here. If you have any further questions on this project.
All right, are there any questions for staff? Yep, Alderman Galhard?
Charlie, have, have we ever worked with a qualus before?
City has not, no, but we checked the references and comparables to other cities they have and we feel confident that they can do the job that we expect.
Okay.
And any, all, all the bids that we're accepting today had to go through our vetting process and become qualified bidders.
Very good point, Mayor. Yes, they're all pre-qualified, yes.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Yep, Alderman Schmelzling?
So just, uh, help me out with, uh, it was budgeted for 500,000 and we got a bid at about 200 plus then another 50,000 for engineering. So really coming in about half, is that correct? Or is there other things planned in that budgeted summary?
That's correct. And we may also, with, with that price, we also added some, uh, rehab of the manholes as well, which we didn't previously, just because we don't know what prices are to come in at.
All right, well, I guess we did well and hopefully they, they do good work at, uh, half the price of Green Bay pipe. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, can we get a motion then to approve, uh, the, uh, the contract with a qualus, please?
Moved.
Moved by Alderman Bailey.
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmelzling. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose no? Motion carries. Next is authorization to execute a contract for the Clovernook storm sewer replacement project with UPI in an amount not to exceed 167, 359. Mr. Warwick?
Yeah, so, um, annually in the budget, we put together about $300,000 program for ditching or storm sewer repairs. Um, due to other projects that were occurring in 2024, particularly in the Clovernook area, we, we elected not to allocate the $300,000 for 2024 to a specific project and move the Clovernook ditching project to 2025 because of the vast amount of construction that is going in that subdivision right now. Um, as a result, um, unfortunately, we had a, well, unfortunately, but fortunately, we didn't have a project designated for 2024 that the Clovernook area had a collapse in the storm sewer. Um, and we went out to bid for the rehabilitation of this project. Um, and the bid came back at $167,000 with about $40,000 with the engineering. The total project is worth about $207,000. So staff is looking for authorization to execute the contract with the low bidder, UPI, on the Clovernook, um, storm sewer rehabilitation project.
Any questions for staff?
Was the collapse piece, um, due to the construction that was happening in, in his district without, you know, obviously not city people, but obvious, he was still.
I guess to clarify, it wasn't actually a collapse. I mean, it was deterioration, this storm sewer, it's a, it's a corrugated metal pipe that's been in that, that neighborhood for at least 50, 60 years and not longer, probably put individually by the city back then. So it wasn't a collapse. It was just a failure just because of age. So there was a hole that was noticed, so the, after televising it a couple of years ago, we noticed that it's time to replace it. So no, it was not related to anything with the, with the 43 Norris Alt project.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? All right, can we get a motion that? Agreement with, aye?
Moved.
Alderman Galhard, is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Schmelzling. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose no? Motion carries? All right, the next item is an authorization to execute 2024 water main replacement program contract with UPI not to exceed $1,468,620.50. Mr. Warwick?
The last project we'll talk about tonight is the award for the 2024, um, water main replacement program. Um, UPI again was the low bidder for this project. Uh, staff is looking for authorization, um, to execute the agreement for this work.
All right, is there any questions for staff before we entertain a motion? Yep, Alderman Galhard, go ahead.
So the second bidder, or second highest bidder was American Sewer Services. Was that the company that we had problems with a number of years ago? The, the, so they're still bidding on stuff apparently.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
That, that company did undergo some changes. They didn't qualify.
That's true, correct.
This is the first year they've actually been able to qualify for us, so in the, in the responsible bidder process.
Yes.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Okay, uh, can I? Okay. Uh, can I get a motion then to approve the water main replacement program project? Or did I already get a motion? Okay. Uh, can I get a motion to approve, please? Seconded by Alderman Doherty. Any further conversation? Okay. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those no? Motion carries. Yep. Thanks, Charlie. Appreciate it. All right. Next is an authorization to execute a professional services agreement with Aylers not to exceed 14,000 for the creation of a tax incremental financing district, and I will turn it over to Mr. Warwick.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Kennedy. So the, the city has been in discussions with the developer for the development of, uh, various parcels, commonly known as 2510 West Good Hope Road. Um, the parcels are listed on there. There's about four tax IDs numbered that take up this entire approximately five acre piece of property. Um, the developer is looking at, um, the use of some TIF funds to help with the environmental remediation part of, of the project. Uh, the general scope of the project is included in the packets for the next agenda item, which is referral to the community development authority, uh, for the public hearing to occur sometime early next month. Um, from here, I'll turn it over to the representatives from Newland. They're going to make a brief presentation and then, uh, Meredith Perks from Vanderwal is here also to discuss the project as well.
All right. Thank you. So I guess we'll turn it over to the folks from Newland first.
Hello, everyone. My name is Joey Wizneski. I'm senior development coordinator at Newland Enterprises.
Excuse me one second, Mr. Warwick. So we are actually, we're talking about G, but this is G and H. We're just doing the presentation of both together.
Yeah. I figured before we make the discussion on the TIF, I felt sorry, I should have explained this better, that the, uh, present, the presenter or the developer would come and just make the presentation on the development before the discussion on the TIF, unless you want to refer to the next item.
Oh, that's perfect. Okay. Thank you. All right. Go ahead.
Yeah, it is up on the screen.
And as you speak, you'll need to speak closer to the microphone. There's a red light on there, and if it doesn't light up, the people on the Zoom can't hear you. So.
Well, if you look at, sorry, to your left, you can see the presentation and you can, is it not up there? It's not. No.
Our screens are on. We can see it.
I take the. And just hit forward button to go to the next one.
Why did it? Ours went off. There we go. Now ours are back. Mine?
Yep.
They're all back up. Now are those up, up there? Can you see them? Okay.
Wait on each.
Else didn't even. Only, once you start something there, all of our screens came on.
Yeah. So as when I turn it on, these all come on and then those two are supposed to come on. I don't know why those two.
Okay. Yes, we'll just let you go. We can see what's up here. So.
Sure. Sure. Um, well, thank you all for having us. Uh, we, uh, Newland, I know it's been a little bit since, uh, we've been here last in 2019. So I wanted to reintroduce, uh, the project and the company, uh, to, uh, anyone that's new, but also refresh everyone's memory about who we are and what we do. Um, Newland Enterprises were based out of, uh, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, located on the east side. Uh, we have projects all over the city. Um, we've done, uh, 20 projects over the course of 30 plus years, uh, specializing in mixed use, multi-family. We also have some commercial space, office space. Uh, we have a wide, wide range of construction types in terms of, uh, traditional stick build, light gauge steel. Uh, we've been doing mass timber now as well. Uh, in terms of our investor and community relations strategy, uh, we're long-term investors. Uh, we want to be a part of the community for a long time. It's good for the investment of the community. It's good for our investors. Uh, it also creates a great, a better situation for our neighbors where we have onsite management, onsite maintenance. There's always someone there from Newland to answer questions, to be of assistance to both residents, uh, and neighbors as well. And to do that, you have to be vertically integrated. So inside the company, we also have our own property management and asset management teams. Um, but both award-winning teams, um, from both, you know, BOMA apartment associations. We have over 2,000 apartments under our management, over 200 square feet of commercial retail and. And we consider ourselves also good neighbors, whilst we want to be good partners with the municipality that we're working with. Uh, we've won over nine RFPs in the city of Milwaukee and we've become great partners with them, not just on building communities, but also building community spaces. So we've created Black Cat Alley on Milwaukee's east side, which was a defunct alley, now turned into one of the, uh, state's highest, uh, visited art destinations. Uh, we've taken two different streets and turned them into pedestrian plazas, creating a great sense of vibrancy around the community. Uh, and also recently opened up Zillman Park in Bayview. Um, as I mentioned, you know, we've used a lot of different construction types. Um, last or two years ago, we completed Ascend, which is now the world's tallest mass timber building, uh, in downtown. Um, we are the first company in Wisconsin to start using light gauge steel for multifamily. We use, uh, radiant hydraulic heating systems. We've had experience in newing micro. Have, uh, won numerous awards and certifications for sustainability, uh, in terms of our lead certifications, green globes, uh, energy star ratings. It's again, part of our strategy is, is being sustainable, uh, as well as being feasible. And part of the ethos of the company too, is, is that we're not just building buildings. We want to build a sense of community. And to build a sense of community, you have to build that within, uh, the scope of the city that you're, that you're in. So you want to be contributing to the fabric of the neighborhood. You want to build relationships, not just within the building, but within the building and the community directly around it. And we believe that having connect, high connectivity, uh, within the building with our neighbors really creates, uh, an ecosystem, both inside and outside the buildings that we're building. That. All experiential design. It's designed within the building that each node of the building, you feel some sort of different experience. That it's whether it be a workspace or a fitness center, community room, you're going to have some sort of experience. So we've done that with our property management team. We've been able to, uh, create very specific programming that keeps the community engaged, keeps our neighbors and residents engaged. Um, again, giving them that sense that they're a part of something, not just their unit or their, uh, bedroom or their living room. They get all of these other things, uh, along with it. To do that, we use our, uh, we were able to leverage our management team. Like I said, we have full onsite management, full onsite maintenance. Uh, with those teams, we're able to understand better what the residents like, what they don't like. Uh, and we're able to contribute that into the designs of all of our projects. So what may have worked great at another project, we're able to bring that here to Glendale. Uh, just want to go over a couple of recently completed projects. You can see the scope of our design and, and, uh, the high level of quality that we are, have become accustomed to. Here's Ascend, uh, again, world's tallest mass timber building. It was, it took a lot of innovation, a lot of, uh, a, a lot of approvals that didn't exist at the time for a building of this type. Um, but what we've learned on, uh, building, uh, a building of this scope is that to get the highest quality, you need to have a really highly amenitized building, a really amenitized community. So here you'll be able to see that there's, you know, rooftop patio, rooftop community rooms. Um, there's a private bar here. Uh, there's also an indoor outdoor pool. There's, uh, co-working spaces. And inside the units themselves, extremely high level of finish, a lot, high level of, uh, appliances, high level of materials throughout. Recently completed last year was, uh, right down the street from Ascend is Nova. Uh, it, it took, it was a, you know, former parking lot, uh, empty, empty storefront, uh, restaurant. But again, learning that we can create a similar type of building as Ascend, put it on its side. And all of a sudden you have the same density required. You need to have a nice, a nicely amenitized building. Again, with pool, fitness center, co-working spaces, very high design in the community room. Again, trying to create something vibrant, bright, active for the residents. Again, not just a bedroom, but it's a, it's a whole community that you're, that you're renting. And here is kinetic in Bayview, uh, in, in the south side of Milwaukee. Uh, this was similar in the sense, uh, to Glendale that it took, you know, you're combining a number of parcels to make something work. Uh, here we are also able to convert, uh, uh, an underutilized street into a pedestrian plaza that empties out into Zillman Park, which has been incredibly vibrant already this summer, even though it's pretty early. It's been, it's been a great experience down there. And here you're seeing some of that experiential design, um, you know, rooftop patio with a sustainability element of green roof, but also a really relaxing place to go spend your time. Um, and, uh, again, high level finishes, high level amenities. So just to refresh your memory about our site here in Glendale, uh, 2510 West Good Hope. This is, uh, you know, situated west of 43, L, along Good Hope Road and Range Line Road. Um, we think this is an ideal site, you're right by Brown Deer Park, right by the golf course, right by the Lilig Field, um, very close to the Aurora facility and a daycare. Uh, it's really a fantastic site. Uh, when we were here last in front of you, I was in 19. You're approved for, uh, three and a half story building. Um, much, uh, are only 89 units. Uh, it's a mix of townhomes and traditional apartment building. Um, unfortunately, right around 2019, I don't know if you remember, uh, the pandemic happened. So that changed how development works. Um, that changed the equations we use, that changed the numbers, uh, it changes construction costs, the cost of capital, investor expectations. Unfortunately, no longer making this project in its size feasible. Um, here you'll see the site layout with, uh, uh, this corridor building facing Good Hope Road and, uh, a secondary entry along Range Line. There's going to be 48 building, 48 units in that corridor building with 41 townhomes, uh, to the north. What we're proposing now, uh, is 179 units, uh, in a four and a half story corridor building and 30 townhomes in, uh, either a, uh, five, a five unit or seven unit or eight unit pods of the townhome scattered throughout. Um, and when I say four and a half stories, I mean that the, the building itself, it is five stories. It's one floor of parking, one floor, uh, and that includes some amenity space and four floors of units above it. But because of the site's contamination, um, we're able to, we have to do a lot of earthwork, a lot of, uh, soil treatment. But that soil is still be able to remain onsite and you're able to berm up around the building. So although it'll be five stories of construction, it'll feel like a four-story building because that first floor of parking is all going to be technically buried. And you'll see in the photos here, it's going to be landscaped in more of a prairie, natural set, set, uh, setting that will, again, give it the appearance of the four stories. But what we like here about this new design is that we feel it's much more optimal site layout. And because of all the, all the, the complications that have come up because of COVID, it's really, we've been focusing on what we call the nexus of something very exceptional. Something pleasing to look at, pleasing to live in, but also financially feasible. So here's the overall site plan. Uh, you can see L-shaped building, um, with the mass of that building, uh, in the corridor being focused on Good Hope Road. You have similar, uh, heights and density to the east. And as we move more towards the north and west, the scale of the buildings to the townhomes drop down to more of a single family style, which would borders both our north and our west. So you have, uh, within that blue shading, those are three-story, two-bed units. And in the, uh, upper right, with those are two-story, three-bedroom units. Um, there is, and then the, and then the corridor building, you have a mix of one bedroom, one bedroom plus ten, two-bedroom units. There's also, uh, over one point, one and a half stalls per unit in terms of parking. So we feel that's a very appropriate, uh, ample parking for this type of site. For the building of corridor building itself, uh, you have, the units inside will be about 850 square feet per unit. Uh, the townhomes obviously will gradually get a little bit bigger with about 1,500 and 2,000 square feet for the three bedrooms. But what we've seen and, and what we're driving home into our market and what the market's demanding is to be highly amenitized, to create the sense of community, to create the, the income you need to have these level of amenities. So you, that's why we have pool, golf simulator, which I think is going to be the only one on the market, which is a really great differentiator for us. Pickleball, pickleball court, pet spa, uh, fitness, grilling stations, co-working. So again, it gives the community, uh, a lot of activity. It also provides residents with a lot of options where they spend their time within the community. So, and then of course, why, why we're here in Glendale is because, uh, Glendale's multifamily vacancy is, is, is very low. Uh, it's below both state and county standards or county averages. Um, Glendale's median income, uh, is, is able to support the type of resident that we're looking for. And there's extremely low vacancy in the single family market. So that means that people want to live here. There's just not as much single family homes. And so those folks need options. Um, and the potential resident that we're looking for at this community is going to be a mix of incomes. It's going to be a mix of ages. Um, the average median income based on our units we're looking at is going to be almost exactly the same median income average as the household in Glendale is currently. So that means that it's going to be available to a wide range of people, a wide range of incomes, people that already live here and want to stay here, but it also attract new people to Glendale that are very much like Glendale's residents are right now. Um, that would be what we call the mature move down buyer or move down renter. Those are folks that maybe don't need the acre lot or the three quarters of an acre anymore. They don't want to mow their lawn anymore. The kids have moved on maybe. Uh, so this gives them a single family-like style of living in terms of their, uh, in terms of the amenities that they'll have. But, uh, no maintenance worries on their end, no shoveling, no landscaping, no, you know, no mowing the grass. Um, a lot of folks are just choosing to rent now. We've seen that swing in the market where they don't want to deal with maintenance. They want to stay here, but they just don't want to have to deal with the, the headaches of homeownership. And also the pre-home buying renters, like I said, very low, um, vacancy in terms of single family. So that means that there's a lot of people that want to move here, make, you know, make the same amount of incomes as people that do, uh, that, that live here already, but there's no housing available. So they want to live here, so they rent. So they rent until they find that right home situation within the community. Uh, here you have a view from the northwest. Um, again, you've seen the massing focused more on Good Hope as well as to the east, which is, you know, similar, um, multifamily development there. And then you have townhomes scaling down into the single family transition to our, uh, to our west and to our north. Uh, the townhomes all have two-car private entry garage. Uh, the townhomes all have private entry front doors. And you're seeing a lot of the similarity in terms of materials and colors weave throughout the project. So the townhomes will maybe be made of similar materials as the corridor building, similar colors. You'll see the pool there, uh, there's outdoor spaces, um, there's a walking path throughout. So again, we're anticipating this to be a very active, vibrant community. Here from Good Hope, you'll see, uh, heavy use of masonry on the corners, uh, extra large windows, extended balconies. Uh, you'll have a hardy plank, uh, cement board siding. Again, on the front, you're going to see that bermed area, a lot of native plantings to make it feel a little bit more pastoral, uh, as you go by the site. And as you look between the townhome pods, these are the two-bedroom, three-story townhomes. You have a mix of, uh, pitched roof, flat roof, articulated masonry, longer windows. These all have private balconies. They also have, uh, the private patio space in front with the walkway. Again, you're getting a feeling of, of active living here, but you still have some private space. The townhomes themselves will be designed more as a single family unit. Um, they'll have their own, uh, furnace, HVAC, uh, it'll have higher-end flooring, higher-end fixtures. So again, someone that's. Only housing. And here is the bedroom townhomes, two stories, same materials as the, as the other townhomes, same materials as the, uh, as the apartment building. Again, private entries, some pitch roof, some flat, but again, with along the walking path there, giving some people a sense. But again, with along the walking path there, giving some people a sense of community, vibrancy and activity. Uh, with that, I'd like to say thank you for, for listening, but also, uh, we're really excited to be back in Glendale. We think the time for this is, is right and we're really happy with this design. Uh, we're looking forward to collaborating with staff and our neighbors and really creating something really special here. And Mayor and, uh, the administrator have also been great to work with so far. So we're, we're really excited to, to keep things moving. I could take any questions you have.
We're gonna have another questions from members of the council? Alderman Gallhard, go ahead.
Uh, how much is the remediation of the site going to cost?
Still working on that. We've, uh, decided on our general contractor, we're working with, uh, two different engineering firms on that. Um, it's, hasn't been nailed down yet, um, but we're looking in the upper, it could be six, six to eight million dollars in terms of remediation. Um, that is, we're trying to do our best we can with the grading to keep as much of that on-site. When you start having to export it, that's when it really starts getting, uh, more expensive. So we're working on our grading plan right now and our soil remediation plan right now to, to shore up that number.
And so that would be the amount of the TIF then, six to eight million?
Roughly, um, we're still working with staff and Lers, which is the, uh, city's third-party, uh, financial contractor. Um, so we're still working on that. We've submitted many materials to them and we're kinda going back and forth on that process.
And I'll also tell you that, um, I know the administrator is working with some folks from Milwaukee about the potential for us to add in some municipal funds as part of the TIF to complete some of the bike and pedestrian things that we've talked about on Good Hope as part of our bike and ped plan. So it may be a collaborative where some of the money goes towards some public projects that the city does. And then the rest of it would be the, the developer, um, incentive toward the remediation of the contaminated site. And that's why we have the, uh, the two items here. One is to work with Aylers because they're the ones that are gonna determine the, the, working with, getting, getting all the figures and then determining what the TIF will actually be. So we don't know the full amount of it, but we have kind of a ballpark range, that makes sense? Okay. Um, next up was Alderman Schmelzling.
Yeah, just, uh, thank you for coming back. I was, um, always wondering what was happening with that. That's just across the road from my district and I'm just south of there. Um, I'm encouraged to hear about some of the opportunities. I saw the proposed sidewalk on the south side of, um, the property on the north side of the road. Um, there is the, the Brown Deer Park right there. So I, I didn't see any like pedestrian walk or anything on your plans other than just the entrance way, the, the roadway. So maybe something to be considered there. There was not as much green space as there was in the prior plan. Um, but I know there's also a golf course right there and a, and a big playground and everything else for those residents to very easily use. So, um, don't have any concern with, you know, higher density personally. Uh, I think the plan looks good in how you have the berm there, so it does kinda conceal that first layer. Um, I'm not a designer, but it looks like you cover the bases. And it's funny because three years ago, or yes, last time you were here, I remember we were talking about having screening for the cars for the neighbors and I saw those were added to the plan. So you, you were listening and thank you for that. Um, I think those are the, the general observations that I had. So I am also concerned a little bit about the, you know, the amount of the TIF. Seems like, you know, you don't wanna dig into Glendale too deep, otherwise you'll find something. So, um, it's always a little bit unfortunate that that falls on the, the backs of the city, but I think the upswing of the development would be beneficial long-term.
Alderman Doherty?
Old population end up being, you know, what's the number of folks that would be added to our city?
So it's a hundred and seventy-nine units, uh, about three hundred bedrooms. So, uh, you're, you know, you're looking at somewhere between around two, two fifty, two twenty-five potentially. A lot of those that we feel that we, you know, will just be guest rooms and we can't, we can't imagine that all of those rooms would be filled.
And noise was a consideration last time where people were concerned about outside air conditioning units and things facing people who lived there already. And I was talking about putting stuff on roofs and doing some things different, how's that addressed in this?
But we're still working on the entire HVAC plan. Um, we're, 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 um, exploring solar, exploring geothermal, um, ways to try to be more sustainable. But, uh, the plan would be to have, uh, any exterior HVAC would be located on the roof.
Alderman Bailey?
I'm sorry, yeah, just, the, the kind of alleged, I know they were very vocal during twenty nineteen. Um, just with the taller building, just keeping them in perspective of, um, I guess what the plan would be in terms of what their privacy concerns will be. I know that that will be something that they'll be very vocal about. Um, so just, I know, um, if you guys have any plans or a- any, any idea of how you would, how you would address their concerns, so.
We haven't been on the site a few times and I, and I wasn't here in two thousand nineteen. So I, but I, I, I know that, but in the process, I know we feel it's very important to engage our neighbors, planning on having a neighborhood informational meeting prior to the plan commission meeting. So that we'll be able to introduce the project as we've done today, hear some concerns. And if there's anything that we can do to alleviate those concerns, we will. Um, that lot line does have quite a bit of tree line on it, uh, as, the whole site really does, to be honest. So, so we're, we're, we're feeling that there's a, a good level of, uh, privacy between the properties. But again, we'd be happy to, to look down, look at any, any possibilities we can to improve, uh, and alleviate what concerns they have.
I believe Manchester. So you're not, you're not towering over them either, right? You're
Correct, they're very similar in, in size, yeah.
Yeah. Other questions? Yep, Alderman Gallhard, go ahead.
And so you're asking us, uh, to front this fourteen thousand dollars for a TIF study, i- is that right? And that's gonna be reimbursed by you, is that it?
Correct.
And what happens if this doesn't go forward? Uh, do you still pay us the fourteen thousand back or how does that work?
So we will require them to pay this money upfront before the, um, the work is started. We've already established an escrow, um, which they've paid us money to, um, all the, the consultants to help us review this. And that will continue to grow as this project goes. So we will do a pay-as-you-go with Aylers and then they will pay us, uh, when the escrow gets to a certain amount. So they will pay this. Uh, we, we established that reimbursement policy probably about a year ago and we've been using that to make sure that that doesn't occur.
April of twenty twenty-three, um, fellows actually raised the, Mr. Fellows had raised the concern. We had a, one developer in particular that had brought us a bunch of different projects, none of which ever went to fruition. And we wasted tens of thousands of dollars in reviews with that particular person. And he said, why don't we have an escrow? So in April of twenty twenty-three, we actually approved the requirement for an escrow and we've implemented it. So it is a requirement. So before this project moves forward, they'll be required to put money in an escrow and then that's what's used to pay for all of the reviews. Other questions, Alderman Shaw?
From my point of view and just throughout the progress of the city of Glendale, I will say I know a number of people who would not like the height of this building and the density. So, um, I just hope everyone's aware, you know, past history, some of the tallest residential areas, and this is rather quite dense and from history of Glendale. I'm just very concerned about it.
Other questions are coming? We do have two motions. The first motion would be a motion to, um, to authorize staff to execute a professional services agreement with Aylers. So can I get a motion to approve, um, the authorization for the professional services agreement, please?
Oh, moved.
Move Alderman Bailey, is there a second? Second, Alderman Schmelzling. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the professional services agreement with Aylers to establish the tax incremental financing district, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? No? Okay, by a vote of five to one, motion passes. Next item is now a referral, this being a TIF district. This item does not go to the plan commission, it goes to the community development authority. And so the next step would be for us to refer this item to the CDA. Um, uh, there is already a planned development district, um, established here. So this would be an amendment to the PD. So can I get a motion then to refer this to the CDA, please? Move Alderman Vukovich, sir, a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Doherty. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of referring this item to the CDA, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
But a five to one, the motion passes and this item will be referred to the community development authority. The CDA does not have a set meeting time, unlike the plan commission, which always meets on the first Tuesday of the month. So, um, we, I, you know, the city administrator has put out a request to the members of the CDA to check on their schedule so we can get a time together, so.
Well, being in
And I'll just, I just wanted to add, um, I have been to an event that was held at the top of the Ascent Tower. Um, the, the workmanship of the building is amazing. And I've seen a couple of the other properties as well that New Land has done. And I, I, that level of quality, um, we, we don't have a lot of properties that, I don't think we have very many properties at all actually that, that rival that level of quality. So I appreciate, you know, this particular, um, level of workmanship and, you know, and who, who you're looking to serve here, so.
Right, and thank you for that. And we invite anyone, please get in touch if you'd like to take a tour of our buildings, talk to our property managers, talk to our residents. We would encourage that. So just to let you know that we do wanna be great partners with the community. So please reach out if you'd like to.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, could I do a quick
Yeah, go ahead.
introduction of Meredith Perks from Vandewall. She is our community development planner who has reviewed, um, this project and she will be the one who will do the recommendation letters and the development coordination throughout the process. I don't know if you wanna come say hi real quick and introduce yourself. And if anyone has any questions about this project or anything else, Meredith is here for that.
Sure, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, yeah, I'm Meredith Perks, I'm with Vandewall and Associates. And so we came on in about, uh, late April, uh, May sometime, um, to, uh, fill in the vacancy of the community planner. And so, um, I've been working with Carl and other staff on, um, getting caught up on, um, the community's code and development review process. So, um, provided a staff report and just really look forward to, uh, working with you. And I'm available for questions as I'm, um, getting more and more familiar with, um, the community. And just as a little bit of background, um, Vandewall and Associates, I was on the team that did the, um, comprehensive plan update with you back in twenty eighteen, nineteen, and then the, the bike and ped plan as well. So really great to be back in Glendale and, um, Vandewall and Associates, I'm in our Milwaukee office. I've got other staff and colleagues that are, um, available to assist. Uh, and you may see other faces here, um, at, at different times, but I will be the main point of contact for the community. Um, so if there are questions, concerns from your constituents, you know, work with, um, Administrator Warwick and, you know, communicate with us, we're happy, um, to, to be part of this team. So, um, I don't know if you have any specific questions, the presentation was very thorough for tonight. Um, I will be providing a recommendation in my next memo for the CDA public hearing. So get into more of the specifics about this particular proposal and how I've interpreted it against the code, um, and, and making sure things are in alignment. So tonight's memo was a bit general on some of the background of the project. And, and to get us to the referral point, um, next memo, um, and communication from me will be a bit more of a recommendation. So, um, but if you have questions in the meantime or thoughts, happy to, to discuss those.
Thank you. You do have two Alders as well as the mayor that are on the community development authority. So I think if we've got any questions, we can make sure to get them to you in the next, uh, week or so, so that you can include them in your report.
Great.
I don't personally have any questions, but I've also sat with the folks from New Land in a private meeting here to understand this project before they even brought it forward tonight. So I've now heard it twice, so I don't have any questions, but others might. So Alderman Gallhard, go ahead. Just a, an approximate timetable for a public hearing on this project?
Well, I think we were hoping for the first week of July, or the first full week of July, so after the holidays. So I think initially when we thought this might go to the plan commission, it was gonna be the July ninth plan commission meeting. But with it being the CD, I think we've asked around if that week would work. So generally trying to get into early July. There will be also some other approval processes for this development because there's sort of multiple pieces involved. So there is the planned development amendment, there's also the CM, CSM and, um, potentially, uh, vacation of the public road, the Range Line to make a private drive. So that has a process and a notification process and a timeline. And then there's also, you know, the development agreement and, and TID kind of finalization, which would also kind of be on a separate timeline as well. So for the PD amendment approval, we're, we're targeting, um, the public hearing in July. And as noted in the, um, agenda and in the report, um, we're looking to have the council waive the public hearing that, or because the CDA, so the, the public hearing for this project will be at the CDA and not as a second public hearing at the second council meeting.
All right, any other questions? Meredith, we certainly appreciate your work and sorry we didn't get a chance to actually talk with you when we were presenting this, but
I mean
the, the presentation was very thorough.
Yeah, absolutely, you just hear it straight from the horse's mouth, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate that. All right, the next item then is a resolution authorizing the submission of a state grant application by the city of Glendale floodplain administrator and subsequent appropriation of city funds for a municipal flood control grant project titled Sunny Point Acquisition Phase Four. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Warwick.
So the enclosed, uh, resolution would, uh, list the administrator or designate the administrator as the signatory for the DNR grant that the city has tentatively been approved for. This is for the purchase of, I believe, seven grants in the floodway. I put floodplain, it's very common to say floodplain, but it's the floodway, um, which is the consistent with the city's practice to purchase and demolish properties that are on the floodway. Uh, and this is a portion of the funding, the other portion of the funding will come from MMSD. So the, the total out-of-pocket cost to the city on this project is zero. Um, we just need to designate the administrator as the signator so we can be awarded the grant for these, um, purchase and demolitions.
This is essentially the same project that we have been doing. I think we've acquired thirteen or fourteen homes so far. This would be for another six or seven?
Yeah, exactly. It's the same exact project that we've done before, but this is for the acquisition of, I think it's six additional homes in the floodway.
Okay, have those homes already been identified or do we just sort of get permission and then as people voluntarily participate in the program, then we exhaust, then we use the funds?
Those pride, those homes have been identified under the grant, they had to be, and it's a voluntary program. So all of the property owners had to agree to sell their property for the assessed value that will be determined once this project gets finalized. But yeah, it's all voluntary, those homes have been identified. Um, I could have provided a list, I apologize, I didn't as part of this, but we have identified them.
Okay, and then in the future, we'll do the same process we've done. Once they're demolished, they'll be restored fully as just green space and we'll change the zoning of them to conservancy so they cannot be developed.
That is correct, and this is an every-other-year grant. So the next time we have this cycle would be two years from now. But MMSD has been gracious enough to supply a hundred percent of the funding in sort of the off-cycle years if anyone agrees to do it.
Any other questions from members? Alderman?
Uh, Carl, I, my understanding was that those maps were in flux, that, uh, I get, what was it, FEMA thought that the, the calculations were wrong? So how do we know whether or not these houses actually are in the floodway?
Uh, so we've, we've, um, gone through the process and, and MMSD has funded the reevaluation of the floodplain and floodway for the city. Um, the calculations are close to being finalized and we've looked at both calculations from the one that was previously established. I believe it was, correct me if I'm wrong, Charlie, nineteen seventy, that the floodplain was appro- approximately established and the ones that are proposed now. And all of these properties are in the floodway on both maps, both the draft one that will come out for twenty twenty-four slash twenty-five and the one that was previously done in nineteen seventy that originally adopted the floodway and floodplain.
Properties in question have had new
Okay, cause I know that, uh, we had, uh, our engineers go through and that was just a couple of years ago. And those were the, the, uh, uh, calculations that FEMA said, these are off. And that was, I guess, my, the, the source of my concern that, you know, what data we're using in, in determining, yeah, these are houses in the floodway.
We have recalculated those, um, estimations of the floodplain and floodway. Um, they are actually pretty close to what they were previously approved in, in the seventies when it was first established. So we are very confident that the homes, I will, I'll tell you, we're, we're a hundred percent confident that the homes are, will be approved in the flood way as the new maps are adopted in two thousand twenty-four or twenty-five by the common council and then the IDNR and then, then FEMA, that they are currently in the floodway and will be adopted as in the floodway when the new maps are adopted.
The properties that are in question are not these properties.
That is correct, these ones will be in the flood way under the new adoption. We are having Sewer PAC review those calculations as a third party. Um, MMSD has reviewed them, our grant, um, sorry, Clark Dees has reviewed them and now Sewer PAC is double or triple checking those calculations right now. And once that is done, we will bring it back to the common council for review and adoption.
Question over here.
I would like a copy of all the, uh, properties that you have identified for this grant because I don't want any of us to be blinded by, blindsided by any of the residents saying anything to us.
Yeah, again, all the residents had to voluntarily, um, agree to it, so I will provide you those maps, yep.
Alderman Doherty, go ahead.
Oh, we're also gonna have in the longer run here of kind of laying out, making kind of laying out, making sure we understand what's happening with the properties in the long run as they get more and more of them added together.
Yeah, that is correct. There are of course, um, significant limitations on what the city can do with these properties and particularly with us rezoning them to conservancy. Uh, the question will be, how can we use them to benefit the residents of the city of Glendale? Can we put in gravel paths to get to the, uh, river and can we use them as walking paths? Those are the sort of the plans that I think the city would be nice to develop of what can we do with these in the future?
Had people start to ask, what is a long-term plan? And I think we need to develop that.
Yep, I agree.
At the moment, I don't think any of these properties are currently accessible because you'd have to cross private property to get to these properties because they have their own private lane. So we'd have to wait until there were enough of these gathered that there was some access point.
Yeah, I just don't want to wait until that's, you know, we should be talking about what will be, not what it can be the second because isn't much that can happen right now.
That is correct.
Long run, I think we ought to address that before we get to it.
And yeah, long run, the only thing we could really do is paths. Can't build anything, can't even build a picnic structure. Can't.
I get it. But I think we ought to talk about it as opposed to having nothing official at all.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think that's a proposal for the budget of 2025 of, of, of what do we spend to, to put a little map together or coordination for that? And, you know, Vandewall, I think would be a great of assistance to help with that. And so I'll talk to Meredith about that.
Any other questions from Mr. Council?
All right. Can I get a motion then to approve the resolution?
Moved.
Move Alderman Schmelzling. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Gelhard. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
O's no? Motion carries. And our final item of new business is an ordinance amending section seven point two point four B, retail class C and removing a reference to restaurants. And I'll turn it over to the city attorney.
Thank you. There we go. Thank you. This is a bit of a housekeeping with respect to the code. The, they changed the state law. Um, it used to be that in order to acquire a class C wine license, that you had to be a restaurant and they've removed that, uh, prohibition or restriction in the statute. And so we are doing the same with respect to our, our, uh, our, our, our code provisions on class C. There was a, uh, something that we had caught, uh, the original ordinance had referenced sub B and then we, uh, were double checking and we realized it's actually sub C. And, um, we, our general practice is to not put an amount uh, for a permit or a fee in the actual code that it would just normally reference the fee schedule. And the reason for that is just easier to update and pass a resolution updating the fee schedule. And we don't actually have to amend the code every time we change something. But then we realized, uh, doing some double checking that, um, there's no reference in the existing, um, fee schedule for that. So we're just going to put it in the code so that we have a dollar amount there. And then there's a bigger process we're all working on right now, which is, um, to overhaul and update the fee schedule itself. And then there'll be a resolution to update that and also to take references to individual amounts out of the code itself to streamline that process. So that'll be, that'll be, um, taken up and, and fixed quote unquote, uh, as we move forward. So again, gen, the, the general thing that we're doing here is removing the restriction, um, that, uh, a class C wine license can only be issued to a restaurant.
Right. Any questions from? Yes, Alderman Shaw?
Just for curiosity sake, what other entities usually would allow wine for consumption then?
So you have those paint and sip places that, um, we have that would be generally one that would considered for a wine license?
There are also wine bars. There's a jazz club wine bar in Meckuan, for example.
I only ask because I don't drink. So none of this is, it's all foreign to me.
Yeah.
So I was just kind of curious.
Yeah.
The, the interesting, one of the interesting things is if, if you have a full class B intoxicating liquor license and the class B beer license, you don't need the separate class C wine license. So, um, you know, you run into situations where sometimes there's, um, uh, entity that only wants to serve wine and they don't want or need the full liquor license, um, that would kind of be a waste to the class B. So this gives municipalities around the state more flexibility in what they issue. And it, you can more tailor a license to what the individual business is actually offering.
Any other questions? Yes, Alderman Schmelzling.
Does this mean that we can sell wine at the Fourth of July now as well? Don't worry, Jessica. I'm not, I'm not proposing that.
You know, I, so this, but I, yeah, I mean, I think for Fourth of July though, that would be a temporary.
Right. Okay.
And.
Beer and wine are already allowed under the picnic.
Yeah. So that really won't, I, I, I think, I, so I think the short answer is yes, but not because of this particular.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes. You, you can't do mixed drinks like old fashions or margaritas and stuff is basically what you can't do.
Right.
Cause there's no, there's no temporary class B intoxicating liquor license.
All right. We do have a resolution approving this ordinance in our packets. Can I get a motion to approve the ordinance, please? Move Alderman Vukovich. Second, Alderman Gelhard. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
O's no? Motion carries. That concludes all of our business. Now we have commission committee, board and staff reports, and I will start with the city administrator. I have nothing tonight. All right. To the attorney.
Well, the WC issued an emergency, uh, new order today, this afternoon that we'll be digging into that will affect instructions for.
By Thursday, there'll be an injunction in the court somewhere.
So I'm sure I can see Megan smiling because this makes her happy. But, uh, yeah.
Record reflects she's not smiling.
But we will persevere. We'll get through it. So we're just, you know, we're going to have to just take these as they come and work through them as best we can.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? We have a lot of elections coming up.
Three in six weeks. The absentee ballots for the July second election are going out tomorrow. Um, and then the absentee ballots for the August election go out at the end of June. So there's a little bit of crossover between those two. Those go out on the twenty fifth. Um, in-person absentee.
That's because there's a federal election. There's a significant requirement, lead time requirement, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
And in-person absentee voting starts June eighteenth. It's, um, normal business hours except Friday because we're now only open eight to noon. The first Friday it's eight to noon, but the second Friday it is eight to five because we're legally required to be here till five. So eight to four thirty Tuesday through Thursday, then eight to noon Friday. And then the second week, eight to four thirty and then eight to five on Friday. All of the hours are on the website.
Yep. All right. Thank you. Chief?
Happy to be here, but nothing to report.
All right. Thank you. Number one? Number two?
I think tonight.
Number three?
Just a clarification, L and J Wednesday. Are we doing that?
The, is, is that the thirteenth or whatever? It's the Thursday. Thursday, and that will be just Zoom. I'll send out the information tomorrow.
Five o'clock?
Um, we can figure out a time that works.
Okay.
So. Make sure that the agenda, because we have the template we use at the top. It says the meeting is in person and also on Zoom. Please make sure you just remove the in-person part in this one. Cause we had a, uh, a meeting recently where I had to come here in person and hold it because the plan commission only had a couple of items. It was like an eight-minute meeting, but it said it was in person. So I held it from here, but most everybody joined the plan commission via Zoom. So thank you. Anything else? All right. Number four?
I think this evening.
Five?
Nothing here.
Number six?
Nothing.
All right. Just a couple of quick things. North Shore Fire Department meets tomorrow morning virtually over Zoom at eight AM. Uh, this morning, the MMSD committee did approve the change order for the Clovernook project. If you remember, we had used all of our PPII funds. It was about eight hundred and eighty thousand and we needed another three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So they did approve the change order at committee this morning. That'll go to the full commission in two weeks. And then I just wanted to, um, make us a, a kind of a little interesting, um, mention here. I know we all hold our own partisan office, but a number of us are involved in partisan activities outside of the council. And, um, in 2016, five people from Glendale went to the two different committees. We had a Republican delegate at the Republican National Convention and we had four Democrats go to the Democratic National Convention. In 2024, we now have four Democrats who are going to be at the, the Democratic National Convention. And I did reach out to the Republican Party to ask them if there are any Republican delegates from Glendale. But for a little city of thirteen thousand five hundred people, that's really pretty phenomenal to have that level of participation at the national party level. So, um, Alderman Bailey is an at-large delegate, uh, will be at the DNC. His husband, Jason Ray, is the DNC national secretary. So he is a super delegate. I was appointed to the DNC rules committee, so I will be at the convention. And, um, Alderwoman Vukovich, she won an election over the weekend. She is now a Democratic National Committee woman representing the state of Wisconsin. She was voted on at the state party. There were, uh, two open seats for women and congratulations. Very exciting to, uh, to see this level of engagement though, that we are also engaged. I mean, I know all of us are involved in our neighborhoods and different activities in the city, but also that we're all being involved in state and national politics as well. And it's really exciting to, to see that. So I did just want to make that note and I will let you know at the next meeting and what I hear back from the state Republican party is if they have any delegates from Glendale. Cause I really, I thought it was really fun. In 2016, we had a group of us that, that went and we had both parties represented. And it was really cool to see that, that we have that level of participation from, uh, residents in our city. So, so that concludes my reports and I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Move Alderman Vukovich.
Second.
Second, Alderman Bailey. Um, all those in favor of adjourning, aye?
Aye.
O's no? Stand adjourned. I hit that gavel really fast before Joanne said no.